I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled board meeting for the Boulder Valley School District. Laura, could you please call the roll? Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Miznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone for your patience. We started a little later than we thought we were going to need to, but thank you for hanging around with us, and so we will get started. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Stacy makes the motion.
Second.
Kitty seconds. Laura, could you please call the vote on the motion to approve tonight's Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Miznick.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll begin as always with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Board President Gebhardt, members of the board. I'm so glad to see you all here tonight. I didn't know that we had that many folks in our community interested in board policy. Coming early. Okay, bad joke. Any event, we've had a, it's good to see everyone. We had a great week of school board members. You'll have a presentation in our information items coming up to talk about some of the great things that we saw. Just great energy. I had an opportunity along with several of board members, of our board members, to go out into our schools, connect with teachers, just a really, just a really great positive, positive vibe in our schools. And I'll tell you that having a summer, right, with less restrictions certainly allowed people to enjoy summer, and that made a big difference. And so I do have two items I'd love to update the board and public on tonight, and they're both involving our employees. The first is substitute pay. And so, board members, I know that we've had numerous substitutes that serve in our school district reach out in regards to pay. So, we know that our base substitute pay is something that we need to work on. We've been working on that over the past year, where we've raised our sub base pay by 15%. And we know that we have a ways to go to raise that. In the budget, in last year's budget process, board approved $500,000 to subsidize the base pay based on these. And so, as we saw last year, as need increased, we increased our base pay to make sure that we are covering our classes, compensating our subs. We will do that again this year. And then, as time moves on, and think mid-year budget adjustment and then the budget process next year, we'll continue to work to raise that base pay. We appreciate all of our substitutes. They play an important role in our school district. And so, I wanted to just share that. I know that we've had folks who think that our base pay is all that we're doing, and we're not doing that, and this board has acted on that. And so, we will continue to keep an eye on that, monitor that, to make sure that our classrooms are covered when our teachers are unavailable. And so, I wanted to start by talking about that and going on the record with the public. Secondly, I'd love to talk in regards to where we are with our BVCEA negotiations. And first and foremost, board members, and you know this, and I hope everybody that's here and watching online knows how much we value our Unit C employees, and we just find ourselves in a new position in regards to our negotiations with BVCEA, in that after multiple attempts, and I think negotiation teams working in good faith, that we find ourselves at impasse. And there's really a couple of issues that I think that we just aren't able to come to terms with at this point. Over for over a decade, we've had the same methodology, where we would, across the board, do pay increases for staff, for cost of living adjustments, and that was based upon the Colorado Department of Local Affairs data, and then a commitment to make sure that all of the pay within all the ranges was within 5% of the 75th percentile based on a market analysis. And this has been the biggest challenge that we've had in negotiations is this market analysis. We use the same methodology we've been using. We use the same consultant that we've been using for years. And BVCEA has introduced a new method that has just some different assumptions and a different way of calculating that 75th percentile. You know, for us, and we take this very seriously, certainly our commitment to our employees and what we've negotiated is important to us. We've checked with both surrounding districts and have had compensation experts review our methodology, and they've assured us that the methodology we're using is the industry standard in regards to HR market analyses when you're thinking about percentiles. And so, that's where we're at. We just haven't been able to come to terms with BVCEA. We haven't made progress. We have a mediation that's set for September 19th, and it is our best hope that we're able to come together, resolve this, certainly, you know, talk in the future in regards to the methodology or whatever that might be, but we need to make sure that we get our people paid. Because we haven't come to terms, and nobody has gotten their raises, and that's not okay. We're not okay with that. The folks here aren't okay with that. So, we need to make sure and count on our negotiating teams coming together to hopefully come to terms at this mediation. I just want to end just by thanking those employees that are here today, that dedicate your lives and so much of who you are to our school district, to our kids, those that are watching online. Again, we have our best hopes that hopefully, within the course of the next month, that this can get resolved, we can get people paid, and we can move forward together. And that's my update for this evening.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Anderson? I don't see any, so thank you, Dr. Anderson, and we will move next into public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website, or by contacting the board secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the person to address the board one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. I don't anticipate that'll be an issue tonight. It will just continue public comment until we finish this evening. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. This video will be recorded for public viewing in perpetuity. BVSD reserves the right to remove you from the meeting if your video includes material that is inappropriate for the public or BVSD students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. Tonight, we will start with Beth Stevens, who's in person, as I understand it. Is Beth Beth, make sure you push the button on your microphone. There you go.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Stevens, and I am a bus driver and the current BVCEA president, as well as on the negotiation team. I would like to acknowledge this group behind me as the hardworking, committed employees that keep BVSD running. A small sample of things we do: keep our buildings and grounds clean and properly maintained, keep buses and equipment in safe working order, safely take students to and from school, feed them nutritious meals, and of course, our security staff who work around the clock keeping all of us safe. In all, we have 38 different job classifications. We hear we are valuable, and we couldn't do it without you. And yet, at our current impasse in negotiations, there are 16 jobs that we can't come to an agreement on. I feel that I'm being asked to literally throw them under the bus and tell them they're not worth as much as the rest of the group. We are all worthy. We all deserve to be brought up to a living wage. We are real people with real needs. We are dedicated employees who love our jobs and take them very seriously. We're proud of what we do. We are BVSD. We're worth more. Thank you.
Next, we have Doug Hamilton, who's been given two minutes by Jody Teeter.
Hello. Good evening, you know, good day, my employees, such as both. And my name's Doug Hamilton. Before I get began, as a parent of two children at BVSD school, I'm well-sustained and trust you, I want to take this opportunity to thank our board members and our educators for your continued dedication to all our children within the district. The last few years have been hard on all of us, and I want to thank you for keeping our children and community safe and our schools as enriching educational environments for our, for my segment, all while navigating the complexity of a global pandemic. I am here today on behalf of the Boulder Library Chancellors to respect the request that the BVSD board put forward a resolution in support of the Boulder Library District merger to bring a library district to the community of Boulder. This will appear on the ballot this year. If approved, the district will bring long-term sustainability to our public libraries, allowing it to reopen buildings, extend services into areas of the counties like Gunbarrow, where I live, and where no library services currently exist, and continues to invest in the valuable partnerships with community organizations, agencies, and institutions, most notably with BVSD. We are grateful to have the individual support of a majority of the BVSD board for this matter. An independent library district will be positioned to better partner with BVSD's BVSD on long-term needs of literacy and enrichment for children and youth in our community. In April, an overwhelming 86% of registered likely voters responded to our poll that they were more likely to support a district because it would mean expanding the Boulder's library partnership with local schools and nonprofits to improve library and literacy programs for youth, seniors, and underserved communities. The library's connection to BVSD, as well as the dedication to provide K-12 students with lifelong learning opportunities, are truly meaningful to the community. Here are a few student-focused library programs that are at risk due to the lack of sustainable funding. The Student One Partnership with BVSD gives all 13,000 students in Boulder Region, in the Boulder Region, free access to databases for homework help through their student ID card. The Summer of Discovery provides reading support to the 700 BVSD students in summer school, focusing library staff resources on at-risk kids. Boulder Reads: more than half the students who participate in the literacy program are English as a second language. In recent budget cuts, the Boulder Reads director position was eliminated. A high priority of the new district will be to hire an outreach coordinator with a team to link library services with students, low-income families, and seniors in the community, members with special needs, and Latinx community members. This is possible under, this is not possible under the current funding model. Both Reading Buddies partners with K-3 aged children and college-age students, and above, to improve their reading sources. The program was paused during the pandemic, just when it was most needed. Most children could be reached, could be reached if our library and resources to take the program into schools, rather than limiting access to library sites. Book Rich Environment: a partnership with Boulder Housing Partners to distribute free books to low-income families. With adequate funding, this very successful pilot program could be scaled up to provide more, many more low-income students with access to books, both English and Spanish. Space Camp: where participants build and launch interactive weather satellites and allow low-income youth students. Building 61, which is only closed most of the time and only open two days a week. This November, voters will have the opportunity to approve a plan for stable funding for a Boulder library district. We are proud to be endorsed at this time by Colorado State President Denver, State President Judy Abil, and the Senate. We hope to have your support in the fall, and we hope that you could pass a resolution to endorse the Boulder Library District. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray First, who's been given two minutes by Samir Bryn.
My name is Ray First. All right. My name is Ray First, and I'm the father of three young boys, two of them already BVSD students. At the August 9 meeting, Stephanie Faren said that BVSD would be hosting COVID booster clinics for students. Based on the mounting evidence of harm from the COVID vaccines, it terrifies me to think that BVSD would advocate and facilitate jab clinics in our schools. In post-war America, cigarette companies took out TV and magazine ads with headlines like "More Doctors Smoke Camels Than Any Other Cigarette," and touting the medicinal benefits of smoking cigarettes. During the same period, the government went around spraying neighborhoods with DDT. We are all led to believe that these were safe and effective interventions. I'm here today in solidarity with literally hundreds of BVSD families who believe the same thing is happening now with the experimental COVID jabs. Most of us have felt too powerless and intimidated to speak against the lies, the censorship, the social pressures, and the financial pressures that we've experienced. Board members and Superintendent Anderson, before the meeting, I provided each of you with a 193-page packet that looks like this. In it, you will find documents from Pfizer, the FDA, and the Department of Defense, including documents submitted into federal court. Reading it, you'll learn about how the military's own medical records indicates that the COVID vaccines led to a roughly 300% increase in both myocarditis and cancer. You'll learn about evidence of data tampering, suppression, and fraud. I urge you to read it in the coming days, as none of this information is reported in the mainstream media or by the health authorities. There's also an excellent documentary I recommend called "Uninformed Consent." Here is a fact from the CDC itself. Kids are 10,000 times less likely to die from COVID than their grandparents or adults with comorbidities. And Ms. Faren admitted on August 9 that COVID vaccines don't stop transmission, so why jab our kids at all? If the argument is that kids transmit to at-risk adults, recent U.S. data from Walgreens and other sources from around the world show that the lowest incidence of COVID is in the unvaccinated population, and that the highest is in the fully boosted. So, the protect adults line of reasoning doesn't stand up to the scientific evidence. As of August 12, the government-run Vaccine Safety Database shows over 300, over 30,000 deaths and 173,000 hospitalizations as a result of COVID vaccines. The CDC admits that these numbers are underreported, meaning that the true vaccine death toll and harms are actually much bigger. Last year, I gave testimony here that we needed a civic discourse and open debate on COVID science. You roundly rejected my proposal, saying that you trusted the government's recommendations and that no further argument was needed. I hope that my testimony today and the evidence I presented to you will give you pause. And in that pause, I hope that you will start digging into the mounting evidence of harm from the vaccines. To my fellow parents and BVSD staff, if you would like a complete copy of the document that I shared with the board, or if you're feeling isolated and alone because you're questioning the official narrative, email us at bouldercovidinformation@protonmail.com. That's bouldercovidinformation@protonmail.com.
Next, we have Carolyn Beninsky. Who I believe is virtual. Is that right, Laura?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
How many are you switching?
Wait, that's fine. We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Carolyn Beninsky. I live in Boulder. Thank you for meeting again in person. I would done able to come tonight, but will in the future. I just want to thank Ray, who just spoke, for his testimony. I want to thank you for lifting COVID requirements on children this year. Children and many parents are breathing a sigh of relief. However, I was so pleased to hear Stephanie Faren claiming at our meeting that the vaccine provides good protection for children, and that BVSD will be hosting booster clinics. She also applied for support for injecting children under 5. I strongly urge against any BVSD promotion of these shots and use on children of any age. At January 22 of this year, over 17,000 doctors and scientists from around the world had signed a Rome Declaration which stated that, one, healthy children have negligible clinical risks from COVID; long-term risks remain too high to support use of these shots in healthy children; children risk severe adverse effects from receiving the shots; healthy, unvaccinated children are critical to achieving herd immunity. In other words, the risk assessment analysis for healthy children tells us no COVID shots for children. I know you're not talking about mandates here. However, if BVSD plans to try to convince the parents to vaccinate their children with these experimental shots, BVSD will be in violation of statute law and the number of the code. Both of these require freedom of choice, lack of all coercion, and informed consent. This is what is required of BVSD: no coercion, no pressure, full informed consent, no, no pledge. This is non-legal. I have a little word for that. Thank you.
Next, we have Cindy Olman, who's been given two minutes from Tom McLeod.
My name is Cindy Olman. I'm a nine-year veteran of BVSD's food services, and I'm here tonight because I am pretty sick and tired of people in the district calling us heroes, me and my fellow classified employees heroes, when actually, that word is meaningless when BVSD doesn't back up their words with equitable compensation. What the BVSD negotiations really means is the 2,000 classified employees are 2,000 canaries in a coal mine. We are the disposable lives they're willing to put at risk. We are the ones who want to help the 35,000 children in the district, but might not be around to do so any longer. We are the bodies BVSD does call heroes. But ask them if they would work under similar conditions and compensation that they offer us. Not a chance. Fact: Boulder County is the wealthiest county in Colorado. Fact: Boulder County has the highest cost of living of any county. Fact: BVSD has an $88 million emergency fund sitting there. Fact: BVSD has great teachers for one big reason. They are paid exceptionally well. BVSD has support staff turnover of nearly 40%. Yet, BVSD administrators have a single-digit turnover rate. And why? Because they are the highest paid in Colorado as well. Yet, BVSD classified employees are ranked at a lowly 25% of all counties when you do the calculations properly, as we have done this year. There's no reason to compare us to other counties when the calculations aren't done properly. It is not equitable to be a high-paying district for teachers and administrators, then leave out other critical support groups. BVSD kiddos will stop getting high-quality education if their parents pay for and expect. And why? Because BVSD is on the brink of losing hundreds more of loyal, dedicated, well-trained, and amazing, skilled, classified workers. Last May, you gave us pins to thank us for our hard work during COVID. I will say this to each of you sitting here atop your $88 million emergency fund. And let me repeat that number. It is $88 million. Is this not a genuine emergency? Can this wait? It can wait if parents are willing to sacrifice their children. It can wait if BVSD chooses to risk losing even more trained employees. Yes, it can wait if you're willing to risk the maintenance and operation of your $350 million school bond you pray will pass this November. But who will take care of those buildings? Or kiddos, when your classified staff leave? Who will drive your buses even after hundreds of young children are left alone on street corners, waiting to be picked up, waiting for the buses to arrive? But yet, there aren't enough drivers. There's not enough maintenance workers to maintain those buses. And who, like me, won't be around to serve restaurant-quality school It's concerning BVSD is trying to force us to pay $25,000 to hire a mediator instead of the qualified free mediator offered to both sides. Shame on BV, thank you. Shame on BVSD for allowing negotiations to be an unfunny joke. But the problem remains. Why
Hi, I'm Thomas Casey. I'm a school bus driver for Boulder Valley School District. 37 years ago, I met my lovely wife here in the transportation department. 37 years ago, we had these same issues. The same issues that go on year after year after year after year. We are dedicated employees. I'm a Casey Cub. I'm a Boulder Panther. I'm a Boulder resident. I have no kids. My wife and I did not have children. But I tell you what, I've coached in Boulder Valley. I've refereed high school basketball for 14 years in Boulder Valley. And now, I'm back after working 30 years of construction in Boulder Valley. To retire from this great job that I thought was going to be just a great place to work, it's very frustrating to walk in the door with a great attitude every morning and start over every morning and know that we have this obstacle in front of us. This obstacle has to stop. We need to pay our employees what they're worth, and for the county we live in, the job we do, all of them. These people here are so dedicated and so willing to see those kids first in the morning and come back in the afternoon and see them off. Please understand our frustration. Please understand that you have a great Please understand that you have a great staff that you need to compensate.
Next, we have Sam Trueblood.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, the Board, Dr. Anderson. My name is Sam Trueblood, and I have been a school bus driver for eight years, and I am the Secretary for the Boulder Valley Classified Employees Association. In my prior career, I was an ERP developer for KPMG, PricewaterhouseCoopers, and an independent consulting firm. I'm here tonight to speak about the district's rollout of the ERP system on its classified and more broadly hourly employees. Prior to the rollout, BVCEA had voiced its concerns over whether the new system would be able to accommodate all the different job classifications that existed within Unit C. BVCEA requested that the district have employees from all departments test the system thoroughly before going live. BVCEA also asked that employees be given training on how to navigate the new system. It appears that few, if any, of these requests were actually done, and when the system went live in April of 2022, the district was not prepared. Over the course of the next few months, paycheck errors were occurring to hundreds of employees. Not only were employees being underpaid, but in many cases, it was taking months for corrections to be made. On top of that, communication between the payroll department and the employees seeking help was nonexistent. To pay their bills, some employees had to pull money out of savings, some had to borrow money from family and friends. Not until BVCEA and BVPA reached out to district leadership did the district start to take notice. Even now, as the district is trying to right the ship, not one email from the administration to say, "We're sorry, and this is what we're trying to do and fix the problem." Not one. In summary, this is awful for morale. Morale was already low due to the ongoing negotiations between BVCEA and the district, and this rollout has just made things worse. "BVSD cares" is a message the district often says, but it just doesn't feel that way from where we're standing.
Next, we have Sean Ciaramataro, who's been given two minutes from Katia Grant.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, the Board, Dr. Anderson. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sean Ciaramataro, and I'm a school bus driver and the lead negotiator for the Boulder Valley Classified Employees Association. I'm here tonight to talk about negotiations. Mediation. A few weeks ago, BVCEA received a mediation bill for over $25,000. This is five times more than what mediation normally costs. BVCA expressed its concerns to the district, but ultimately, they decided that they wanted to stick with the current mediator despite the significant financial impact to BVCEA, despite the fact that a free mediator was available that the district refused to use, and despite the fact that BVCA let the door open for negotiations to continue, pass and pass, and the district refused. Budget. The message that Unit C employees keep hearing from the district is, "We wish we could pay you more, but there's no room in the budget." But from 2018 to 2021, the district overbudgeted expenditures by 8.7 million, 642,000, and 5.9 million in the operations and technology fund, the food service fund, and the transportation fund respectively. Funding. BVSD is the only school district on the front range to have a transportation mill and an operations and technology mill. In 2021, these two mills generated over $36 million to support the district's operations, yet the district continues to struggle to find and retain classified employees. Other school districts rely entirely on money from their general fund to pay for these expenditures. From 2019 to 2021, expenditures in the general fund for operations and maintenance and central support services have decreased by over $11.2 million. At the same time, school administration costs have increased nearly $2.5 million. Now, the district wants voters to pass a $350 million bond measure. This bond will provide money for two new schools and much-needed maintenance to existing schools. It will also free up money in the general fund as old infrastructure is replaced with new infrastructure whereby reducing operations and maintenance costs. My concern is, just like the transportation mill and the operations and technology mill, this freed-up money will go to increasing administrative salaries, which are already some of the highest-paid positions in the state. Not spend on support staff to maintain the new infrastructure so it doesn't end up where it is now and cause taxpayers to have to pony up more money in the future. Personally, I've always voted for anything that will help public schools. However, district asking for $350 million, that won't spend $500,000 to pay its classified workers a fair and competitive wage is not one that I can support. COLA.[940.41][940.41](APPLAUSE). BVSD determines COLA based on the numbers provided by the state. In 2021, '22, that number was 3.5%. That percentage is the same for all employees. For those at the bottom, this is far too little, and for those at the top, this is more than what COLA was actually meant to cover. This year, the San Buen Valley School District gave all teachers a $4,000 COLA. For those at the bottom of the pay scale, this was an 8.8% raise, and for those at the top, it was a 4.4% raise. BVSD's 3.5% COLA for administrators this year amounts to a 5, 6, and in some cases, $7-plus thousand COLA raise plus an additional 2% for step-eligible employees. Why not use some of that money to bring up those at the bottom? What's going to happen next year when the state determines COLA to be 6% or more? Are we really going to give administrators $9,000 to $12,000-plus COLA raises plus an additional 2% for step-eligible employees? This certainly is not fair or equitable in any way, and it's time for the district to change its ways. In summary, I, like many of my coworkers, love my job. I'm a strong supporter of the public school system and believe that the Boulder Valley schools are some of the best in the state. Tonight, I hope that the Board and the administration see that raising classified employee salaries is a cost that benefits everyone.
Next, we have Zachary Ravenhock.
Hi, I'm Zachary Ravenhock. I've been following the negotiations teams since they're available to the public. Last couple of months before summer, Bill Studer, or Stutter, I'm not sure, said in negotiations and in the '22-'23 proposed budget that there's a trend of slowing growth, which indicates declining enrollment within the state for years to come. But then I got an email at the beginning of the school saying that we sent out a ballot issue to voters this fall, which will, among other things, plan for enrollment growth. And as I was watching the mediation, I just thought, "Oh, I'm getting mixed messages." I looked it up, and there was more to the story, and no side is wrong, but it was just a frustration to get that email being like, "Yeah, there is still enrollment growth and we are having growth," but then hearing, "No, we're not." Let's see. Bus driver and aide employee counts have a decreasing trend as well over the past four years, from about 270 to just under 200, and it's not because of a lack of need. There are still routes with no drivers. And luckily, last year, I was able to help with that, but I can't recommend anyone to take it as a full-time job because it's not guaranteed as that. I really want to let other people come in as bus drivers, but the only people that I can recommend are people who are looking for retirement, not someone who's looking for a career. I want this to be a career. I want you to help me make it happen, too.
Next, we have Michael Guidarelli, who's been given two minutes by Diana Saldana.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the Board, Superintendent Anderson, district staff, and honored guests. My name's Michael Guidarelli. I've been a bus driver for almost nine years here in the district, and I base it at Boulder Terminal. When I spoke at the last Board of Education meeting Tuesday, August 9th, I extended an invitation to all Board members and administrative staff to come to the Boulder Terminal and enjoy a ride in my bus and see in real life all the things we do over the course of a bus run, any interplay between me and my students and among the students themselves. In fact, just this morning, my boss, Keith Putman, gave me the okay to pick you up anywhere within the city limits of Boulder before I start my runs and drop you off after my runs are completed. How are you going to top that? Or if you prefer, you can arrive at our bus terminal on 63rd and have a conversation with our student aides, mechanics, routers, or other drivers and learn what challenges we're facing. We would also welcome any ideas or suggestions that you may have. Also during the last board meeting, Dr. Anderson announced that the Boulder Valley teachers are the highest-paid teachers in Colorado. I'm very happy for our teachers and their compensation. But I would like to remind Dr. Anderson and the district negotiating team that not all of Boulder Valley's teachers teach in brick-and-mortar buildings, and not all of Boulder Valley's teachers are the highest paid in Colorado. You see, Boulder Valley's school bus drivers are also teachers and are constantly teaching their students. A non-inclusive list of subjects that Boulder Valley bus drivers teach their students would include: safety on multiple levels, responsibility, the art of listening, meaning listening to understand, not just to reply, respect for oneself and others, courtesy, kindness, cooperation, tidiness, and leadership. Let's take leadership, for example. In my first seven years, I gave the evacuation drill speech to students who were on a sports team I was driving to an away game, match, or meet. Their attention to my talking was akin to that of a flight attendant giving their pre-fight safety spiel. Two years ago, I said, "That's enough. My students are going to give the evacuation speech," with me coaching along the way. And the change in their attentiveness from when I gave the evaluation speech was absolutely astounding. I don't have time to demonstrate it right now, but I'd be more than happy to show you later. In conclusion, I don't doubt that our brick-and-mortar teachers deserve to be the best paid in our state. Drivers and aides are not asking to be the highest-paid drivers and aides in Colorado. We're only asking to be paid in the 75th percentile of our peers. But apparently, the district doesn't feel its mobile teachers are worth even the 75th percentile of pay for the valuable lessons we teach our children. Thank you for your time.[1407.65][1407.65](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Susan Diaronio, who's been given two minutes from Pete Diaronio.
Hi, my name is Susan, and this is my seventh year driving for BVSD. I love my job, but I really do need a raise. I often wonder why I continue to drive a school bus when my take-home pay is so low. A speaker from a few meetings ago addressed this for me when he said that kitchen workers were being taken advantage of due to their dedication. My kids went to BVSD, and I know a lot of parents, teachers, kids. I enjoy serving them, and I find it really purposeful. Just a quick, I looked at my raises over the years. My deductions have increased so much that the effective raises I have received have been almost nothing. It's mostly, I get the cheapest insurance possible for the three of us, my husband and one child, and that's what has increased the most. But from 2016 to 2017, the net increase was 84 cents. 2018, $1.44. 2019, 32 cents. In 2020, I actually decreased by 3 cents. And so this isn't even beginning to cover the cost of living, right? In 2021, I got an increase of $4.41. The district gave, I think, a $1.50 raise, and I dropped my daughter off the insurance. And I still have to pay NAU $3,000 a year. Okay, so once I received a zero paycheck check for working 50 hours, that's what my deductions are doing, I feel confident that the union's analysis of pay grades compared to other districts is accurate. Sean is an accomplished CPA who used to work for one of the big four accounting firms, Pricewaterhouse. And a plug for Pricewaterhouse, they do hire the best of the best. He knows what he's doing. Sean has already spent over 600 hours of his own time analyzing payroll data to help the people around him who he knows are struggling. I would like to speak to the negotiation process that has been taking place. At the first meeting, the district asked the union to negotiate in good faith and move forward in a respectful, timely, and efficient manner. I feel like the things that our team brought up were being addressed very slowly. I am sad about the latest struggle that is happening about selecting a mediator. It is my understanding that a cost-free one was available but denied by the district, and then they recommended one that charges five times the normal rate. It is inconceivable to me that teachers and administration are rightly being paid 100% compared to their surrounding districts. And at the same time, you are fighting so hard at keeping bus drivers, aides, kitchen workers, custodians, and other Unit C employees below 75%. I would expect this from a corporate world, but I am baffled that this is happening in a public school district. My rather shy daughter had a kitchen worker who helped her navigate a difficult middle school lunchtime environment. I will always be grateful to that person, and they unfortunately will never know that. People in the shadows make a huge, huge difference. Whether I decide to stay with the district or not, as a resident of Boulder County, I will do all that I can to help make this right. I'm not a speaker, but here I am. We need your help, and thanks for listening.[1670.51][1670.51](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Ronald Hilton.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I want to thank you for your time. My name is Ron Hilton. Or to the most important people I work for, it's Mr. Ron. See, I'm a school bus driver, and the most important people I work for are the children. If it wasn't for them, I would have left this job years ago. I've been driving mountain route above Boulder now for the past 10 years. In that time, I've seen some disturbing trends. When I started in 2012, we had over 300 drivers and aides. Now that number is less than 200. It's not getting any better. Over the summer, we had just a few new recruits. The problem, as I see it, is the lack of incentive to hire on. I ask you, why drive for Boulder Valley when you could go to a different district where the cost of living is less and get better pay doing the same work? Another trend I find troubling is with the driver and aide shortage, we are being asked to do more and more work. This is also causing further shortages in drivers. I don't think most people realize just what a big responsibility driving other people's children around is. Think about taking 60 kids to the Denver Zoo during rush hour or driving them down the mountain in a blizzard with icy roads. with icy roads and sheer drop-offs. In conclusion, I and many of my colleagues are fast approaching burnout. We implore you, please take a closer look at negotiations. You need to do something to stem the bleeding. Think about it. What good is your bond issue to improve schools if you have no one to take the kids to school, no one to maintain the schools, no one to cook the meals for the kids? Again, thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ross Verner, Verner, virtual?
Yes, thank you, BVSD teachers, staff, and board for all you do. I've been a classroom teacher, and I'm a BVSD parent and founder of an educational organization. I'm very impressed that BVSD and the union work together to resolve another key issue and take action to set up an advisory program in all BVSD middle and high schools. Advisory is scheduled time each week, where a teacher leads her same students to build relationships, create trust, and focus on social and emotional learning. There are no breaks. Studies show that advisory improves academic performance, reduces behavioral problems, and creates more equitable communities. In charter networks for independent schools across the nation, well-organized advisory is the norm, not the exception. Even Denver Public Schools, like many districts, started an advisory program during the pandemic and is now made it mandatory. Tom Baker, one of our nation's foremost public school experts, calls advisory, quote, "The backbone of the secondary experience." Research proves that students are more likely to thrive when they have a strong relationship with at least one adult in the school building. Let's be honest, in many BVSD high schools right now, we do not know which kids have a trusted adult relationship and which kids don't. And advisory helps solve that problem. The current contract with BVCEA classifies advisory as a conditional threat and therefore not allowed. But BVSD was able to figure it out with their union, and a handful of BVSD schools have started advisory anyway, like Centaurus and Vista, Summit Middle School, and Eldorado. Starting advisory programs is the single most powerful step that BVSD can take to address rising student anxiety, depression, and suicide. Let's make it happen.
Next, we have Tanaya Mancad, and I believe this is virtual as well.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Anderson. I would like to talk to you tonight about a document that we parents and guardians receive on the second day of fifth-grade every year. The document is unlike anything I've heard from the district before. It's the one-to-one agreement, two pages of legal agreements, four type of sections, thirteen titles of actions that contain words, requirements, or expectations, four terms in the first quarter of the first page. I've been asked to review this agreement for a program that I have not yet been told about, and for other consequences if I don't comply. As a simple example, we're being told that we might be negatively responsible for a cross-residues device with no regard to their teaching and access. It's not a great means to be secure when having fifth-grade classrooms in them. In addition, I want to give expert teachers the position of paranoia with this issue in our community at school. I have talked about it to dozens of parents across the district. Every one of them would be holding on by the agreement. We feel that we're a royalty, and they're easily bullied into signing this without full disclosure. Or that's actually not fair. And this is an excellent program that's been in work for at least five years. I saw more divisions in the morning about the TTH Monroe brothers at Chipotle than I have about this universe, global educational equity program. These agents have all of these parents in this corner supporting the vision of the one-to-one program. And unfortunately, you don't know now. Everyone's short on guidance and discuss and dividend and sign before or moved on. But you go with the mental chances to figure that out. We currently have a negotiation under our shoes, which I know the superintendent's in our principal. A true thanks for your confidence.
Next, we have Gretchen McLaughlin, who I also believe is virtual. Gretchen, are you on the call? Do you see her, Laura? I see your icon. Gretchen, are you muted? We can't hear you. Maybe move past and come back.
That's what I was going to say, and come back.
Next, we have Jeff Goldstein.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, the board, Dr. Anderson. My name's Jeff Goldstein. I've been a school bus driver for over 11 years. According to Rob Price, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, it's always been the district's goal to get everyone up to the 75th percentile in Unit C. A few of the objectives stated in the agreement between our union and the Board of Education are: attracting and retaining highly qualified employees, providing compensation that supports BVSD's mission, vision, values, goals, and strategic plan, including acknowledging current market review and the 75th percentile. The contract between BVCEA and the board highlights the 75th percentile. But as you can see from the informational sheet handed out, or soon to be handed out, Unit C workers are significantly below the 75th percentile. Here's just a few examples. Food service workers are at the 33rd percentile, or $1.82 an hour below the 75th. Custodians are at the 47th percentile. Kitchen satellite leads ones are at the 27th percentile. Campus monitors are at the 44th percentile. Building maintenance mechanics are at the 50th percentile. Grounds maintenance mechanics, I believe, are at the 55th percentile. Only two positions are at the 75th percentile. The numbers were calculated using 2022, 23 salary data collected from the 10 school districts' websites listed in the memorandum of understanding. If there are any questions about the accuracy of this information, BVCEA will be happy to show its supporting documentation used in this analysis. In summary, if the district is reporting that its goal is to pay its employees in Unit C at the 75th percentile, then why is it not happening? We don't teach our kids to say one thing and mean another. If BVSD really cares about its employees, it's time to show in its actions, not just words. It's time for the district to do the right thing and negotiations to pass what you promised. We can't thrive at 35, or 55, or negative 5. We need 75. Thank you.
Laura, do we have Gretchen McLaughlin? Okay, let's go back to that, please.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I have some technical difficulties. I think you can hear me now.
Yep, I can hear you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I was disappointed after listening to Stephanie Ferrin's statements during the last school board meeting. Ms. Ferrin states that Boulder has the second highest COVID-2 vaccination rate in the state, and that this is a good thing. However, are Minnisferen, BVSD board members and staff aware of all the injuries occurring from these COVID shots? I would hope by now that you are all looking at the data because the information has been out for quite some time. As of August 5th, 2022, Beres has received 49,284 adverse events reports for children ages 0 to 18, including 4,949 serious adverse events, 1,353 cases of myocarditis, and 135 deaths. As you may be aware, Beres only captured one percent of all vaccine injuries, therefore, the number of adverse events is much greater. Pfizer documents reveal what so many people already knew. COVID injections are extremely dangerous. They are EUA, and we do not know the long-term consequences of these injections. Nine of the 38 pages of the Pfizer report on postauthorization adverse event case reports through February 2021 lists 1,291 adverse events of special interest. Grouping 42,000 blood cases reports repeating Pfizer reported its intent to evaluate the following: anticoagulant reactions, cardiovascular and COVID-related events, skin reactions, facial paralysis, blood, neuroimmune, musculoskeletal and neurological disorders, and other disorders such as multiple organ and kidney dysfunction and rare cirrulations, autoimmune respiratory problems such as colon or abdomen, hemorrhage, blood clotting, flooding events, stroke, and blood vessel inflammation. The bottom show document reveals Pfizer's internal knowledge of the history, series, number of injuries, illnesses, and deaths experienced by the victims of the injection. Mediateations provided in form of end-of-year medical plans with serial data of COVID vaccines. Children have robust immune systems and can recover from COVID without undertaking experimental plastic mRNA vaccines from an out-of-control industry that is worth $20 million.
Thank you. Next, we have William Rosenbaum.
Is that on? Good evening, BVSD Board. My name is William Rosenbaum. I've worked for the district for seven years now. I've held many different custodial positions within the district. Currently, I'm the head custodian of Community Montessori, BVCEA Vice President, and I'm on the BVCEA negotiations team. As you know, BVCEA is currently in negotiations with BVSD for better pay for all Unit C employees. Per our contract with the district, Article 14, Section 1A, or A1, states that salary schedule will be based on the 75th percentile midpoint of the market review. And an MOU states that the market review will be conducted of the 10 surrounding school districts. There are only two job classifications currently being paid at the 75th percentile. Some of the lowest in the district's last proposal to us was food service assistant would be at the 33rd percentile, or $1.82 below the 75th. Second-shift custodians would be at the 47th, or $1.26 below the 75th. Kitchen satellite leads one would be at 27th percent, and $1.66 below the 75th percentile. And bus drivers would be at 39th percentile, $0.96 below the 75th. Maintenance mechanics would be at 50th, and $1.87 below the 75th. BVSD pays its teachers and top administrators at the 100th percentile. BVSD has the highest-paid teachers in the state. Unit C is struggling. We cannot fill open positions due to low pay we are receiving. We are no longer competitive in the market. Retail, food service, these industries are passing us by. Would you want to clean bathrooms in a high school for $15.92 an hour when you could flip burgers at McDonald's for $19? At my school, I only have one night custodian. When he is out, I have to rely on the sub crew or outside temps. Most of the time, we get no help, and that can be for days at a time. Then it falls on me to do my job and the job of the night custodian. I get what I can done in the hour and 45 minutes I have before the kids come in in the morning, and it's nowhere near enough. Bathrooms go unclean, classrooms go unvacuumed, hallways go unswept and not mopped. It puts a large undue burden on us. And on top of that, there's no daytime coverage for head custodians. We're expected to come to work every day because there is no one to cover for us. We will never attract or retain good employees without fair pay. This is not just a custodial issue, this is a Unit C issue. Every trade in Unit C is shorthanded and will continue to be until the district catches up with surrounding districts. We love working here, and we push through for the kids, but the whole, and the whole, we're all burning out.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And our last speaker is Tim Osborne. Not yet, it's not on. The red light will come on when it's on. There we go.
Hello, gentle people everywhere. This week, student aides and bus drivers received medical training for people with epilepsy, seizures. We have learned to protect, excuse me, detect, protect, time, and administer medication and call 911. I guess we're a part of the medical community. The second thing is, in the past, mechanics have been driving school bus routes. This is a very questionable thing to do. The mechanics are not familiar with students or the students on the route. Problems can arise from that. Also, speaking as an experienced person in the garage, we get a note to take us away and do our driving, and we try to remember exactly where we stopped. Everything is in blocks, and we don't want to mistake something in that block because it could be dangerous. So when we come back, a lot of times, we're uncertain where we stopped. So we may have to go back a half an hour. Or right before bedtime, we might be thinking of something, and it says, "Oh, my God, is that bus going out next morning with that issue?" I don't want that to happen. Okay, and to take a severe right-hand turn. In 1960s, I was in 4th grade, and German measles was going through the area. Now Marie, in our classroom, she was vaccinated against polio and other things, but we didn't have vaccines for measles or other issues. Marie, she just died, and we went to her funeral. So I would not like to see any of our students die. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, I think I'm correct. That concludes all of the people who signed up for public participation tonight. That's correct. So I'd like to thank everybody for showing up for tonight. We appreciate hearing from our speakers this evening and appreciate everyone taking the time and the patience to sit through all of this and for your respectful applause and respectful consideration of all of our speakers. Thank you very much. So now, board, we will move on to board communication. Who would like to go first? Kitty?
First, thank you to everybody who came and spoke to us. Thank you for being interested in the work of the board. I don't have much to say except that last week, the board was invited, and Lisa and I went to a lunch with the youth leaders of the Youth Equity Council. And it was just lovely, meeting with these kids and, you know, seeing how passionate they are about equity, seeing their leadership skills. It was just a great experience, and I'm glad I got to go to it.
Is that it, Kitty? Thanks. Lisa, and then Richard?
I appreciate the folks who spoke tonight. In particular, I wanted to thank Doug Hamilton for your ongoing advocacy for the library district. I am a supporter and endorser in my personal capacity of that measure. I know, as Doug mentioned, that's true for several of us on this board. And I just wanted to clarify, I think we had agreed that there was a time that we all wanted wanted to speak about how and when and why we would make a decision around endorsement. And I thought we were going to see that on the agenda tonight, but I don't see it. So I'm wondering if we can get clarity around when we'll have that discussion and when we can provide...
We can bring that up during agenda setting?
I just wasn't sure if there was something that was meant to be there that isn't.
Not tonight.
And then the only other thing I have is just a thanks to all the folks in this room for my kid's first week of school, which has been great. I've got a first grader and a third grader this year, off to a great start, smiles from ear to ear, and everybody in this room and everybody not in this room has done an amazing job across the district to make this new school year happen. So as a parent, thank you so much.
Richard?
I also want to thank all the speakers that came and spoke tonight. Bus drivers, food service workers, custodians, and I'm hoping that the negotiations do proceed forward and that we will come to some kind of agreement, hopefully around that time that you indicated, Dr. Anderson. My question is, for us as Board members, and also for the superintendent and for Rob, what happens after negotiations, if negotiations still continue to be stopped or whatever? I just need to get some information on that.
Dr. Anderson will address that in a minute. Any other Board communications from any other Board members? No? I would just like to say my sincere thanks, along with my fellow Board members, for the great start we've had. I was able to visit, I don't know, four or five schools at least with Dr. Anderson. And what I heard from the staff and the principals was this is a new year, that there's a new energy, and that we're all very excited, having come off of a post-COVID. But I also remember Dr. Anderson telling us last year that this could take two to three years to recover from. So to the extent that we're all thinking we're going to be back at normal, I don't think that we are quite back at normal, because what we went through with the COVID was really long and taxing and hard. And I think we're still, some of us are still struggling to recover from that. So I just ask that we all be patient with each other. I have seen some parent communications that were less than patient to our teachers, and I just ask our parents before they come out after our teachers on Day Three that they consider how hard everyone is working to try to make everything work well for all of our students and for our community. So I just ask that we be patient with each other. I'm looking forward to a really great year ahead, and I thank all of you for your support for our community. Thank you very much. And Rob, did you want to just do a quick answer to...
I'll just share. I'll give the Board the timeline and the process outlined, as outlined within our negotiated agreement with BVCEA.
And we will keep the public as we can informed as we go along. I mean, there's just certain constraints in our policy and in the law that prevent us from actually responding and from doing anything more than listening and trusting the process that we have set out and that we followed over many years. So, thank you. All right, we will move on now to our next agenda item. Our first information item tonight is our annual back-to-school update. Dr. Anderson, can you introduce that for us, please?
I sure can, and I believe that the team is going to be up here to present. Board members, as we do each and every year, we give kind of an update on the first few days of school. We'll have numerous members of our administrative team who will speak to you about the various aspects of what it takes to open up 57 campuses covering 4.6 million square feet, 30,000 students, feeding them, getting them to and from school. Lots of logistics happen in any day of school, and the first day of school is certainly special around that. And so I know we have numerous members of our team who will be here to speak tonight. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. De La Cruz.
Good evening, President Gettart, members of the Board, and of course, Dr. Anderson. We are so delighted to share with you some of our back-to-school events, preparations for getting our campuses ready to open and welcome back our students. As Dr. Anderson referred to, we certainly have a large district with a over $600 million in budgeted expenditures. You know that we have more than 4,000 employees. We're so grateful for our educators, for our classified staff who help us to serve over 2 million meals over the course of a year, that help us to drive over 1.8 million miles over the course of a year. We are so appreciative. And we've got 56 schools up and running, which we're really delighted about. As you know, we welcomed back our students. You were at our schools with us. We also had cabinet members and others at our schools. We were all part of some celebrations as kids were excited. I heard our Board members say the excitement and the buzz and the positivity is definitely in the air, and we're super grateful for that, knowing that we have a road of recovery still ahead. There's just so much enthusiasm in our schools. This is actually one of our bulletin boards at Nederland Elementary, asking the question that we're all eager to answer, who's ready for a great year? And I would say all of us are. It seems like all of our kids were coming in with smiling faces. We saw families that were so happy to connect with teachers, educators, principals. And it took a lot, as you know, to get us ready for that, and we're going to talk more about that tonight. But before that, we want to share some of the excitement. We're stuck. We'll get there. All right. As you saw in the video, as well as in these pictures, our school leaders, our teachers, our paraeducators, our office staff, our custodians, really everyone across buildings, went above and beyond to have those welcoming rituals, routines, and just opportunities for kids and educators to engage with each other. And there was so much buzz in our schools. But it took a lot to get ready for those first days of school and really getting ready for that first bell. And you're going to hear tonight from our teams about the schools and the support networks and that preparation, how our facilities teams prepared, our information technology team, and of course, the BVSD Help Center. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robin Fernandez, who's going to share about schools and support networks.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to share with you this evening some of the leadership shifts that have occurred in BVSD this year. First, we continue this year with our three-network structure, and new to the Executive Director Team is Neil Anderson, who is in his second week as the Executive Director of the Southwest Network. We are truly thrilled to have his experience and expertise on our team to support the schools in the Southwest Network. On this slide, you can see that we are so fortunate to have many new and talented principals joining our communities in BVSD, beginning with the East Network, which encompasses the communities of Lafayette, Erie, and Broomfield. We have one new principal, Nick Vanderpoel, who moved across the district from North Boulder to Broomfield as the new principal of Aspen Creek PK8. In the Southwest Network, which includes the communities of Lewisville and South Boulder, our new principals include Jeff Anney Warden, currently serving as the interim principal at Coal Creek Elementary; Dr. Scarlett Chopin, the principal at Fairview, who has joined us from her most recent position in Jeffco Public Schools; Mark Sibley, the interim principal at Monarch High School; and Jonathan Stein at Superior Elementary, who is also coming to us from Jeffco Public Schools. Finally, in the Northwest Network comprised of Central and North Boulder and the town of Nederland, we are happy to welcome Dr. Lana Morales, who left California to join the BVSD as the principal at Boulder High School; Bryant Shaw, who has returned to BVSD from Aurora Public Schools and is now the principal of Casey Middle School; Liz Tucker, who has taken the position as principal of Centennial Middle; Senenauer is now serving as the principal of Foothill Elementary School; Kristen Lewis has taken the helm at Manhattan Middle School; and Gavin Goodrich has also joined us from Jeffco Schools to lead Nederland Middle Senior. And last but not least, John McCleskey has taken the role as principal of New Vista High School. A thank you to all of our principals, and we are so happy to have you leading our communities. The professional learning team, under the very capable leadership of Katie Mills, hosted over 30 new leaders, including principals, APs, and directors. The group had the opportunity to learn about BVSD initiatives, goals, and systems, as well as to meet with different departments and begin to network with district teams as a part of our professional learning for onboarding new staff. In addition, beginning on August 3rd, we welcomed over 120 new educators to our district during the 2022 New Educator Orientation. Over the course of the week, new educators focused on content, enroll-specific resources, district initiatives, and a host of pedagogical tools around MTSS, DDI, CLDE assessment, and SEL. In addition, all of our school district leaders have participated in the course Let's Talk Courageously About Race, which is the first in a series of trainings around culturally responsive practices. As part of the New Educator Orientation, our Educators Association, BVEA, provided lunch, gave out prizes, and helped to ensure that our new educators received a very warm welcome to our district. As always, we're extremely grateful for the work of BVEA under the leadership of Patty Delgado and David Stewart to support educators throughout BVSD.
Good evening. Just want to highlight a few things that you might not think about happen over the summer that actually happened over the summer. So for a lot of our departments, I always think of a showtime over those 11 weeks that we have when we're thinking about bond work or the work that our custodians do, our maintenance mechanics, et cetera. So really, over the last 11 weeks, all of our departments have been working tirelessly. Over the summer, when most of our students and teachers are out of the buildings, our custodians are cleaning everything from the lights to the walls, to the floors, they strip and wax all of our VCT floors, they strip and wax or strip all of our gym floors and refinish them. As always, keeping our students safe is our number-one priority. Therefore, our maintenance and security teams have been focused on making sure our life, safety, and security systems are functioning properly. So they complete annual inspections on such things as our elevators, our intercom systems, public address systems, fire suppression, fire sprinklers, checking all of our fire extinguishers throughout our buildings. Maintenance also completes inspections on all of our adventure courses. So when you see a climbing rope, a net, the climbing course out of Boulder High School, all of those have to be inspected on an annual basis. So that's all done over the summer months. HVAC, they go through all of our equipment, making sure they change out filters, clean our condensing coils, making sure that our mechanical systems are operating appropriately. When we think about environmental compliance, we have to make sure that all of our stormwater inspections, laboratory fume hooded calibrations, domestic water sampling, all of our AHRAP plans, and our hazmat removal when we're taking chemicals out of science rooms, that is all done over the summer months. So in addition to all of that, we also completed approximately $2 million worth of work when we're thinking about special education improvements at Lafayette Elementary School, a boiler replacement at Monarch High School, on top of the workload that maintenance does on a daily basis. And that's just, we're not hitting on everything, such as all of our grounds, upkeep, trying to transport students for summer school, feeding our students for summer school. This is on top of all of that. So with that, I will turn it over to Frankie Elmore, our Chief Informations Officer.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Board members. Dr. Anderson. So, summer's always IT's busiest season, and this season was no different. So there's always a lot going on in IT. So over the summer, we deployed over 5,200 devices in support of grades K through 12. We've deployed 1,500 devices to support grades 1 through 4. And as a reminder, last year, PK and K all went 1 to 1 last summer. We also added over 540 devices, high-end PC devices, and deployed for 21 labs in 14 schools, that is to directly support computer science and engineering classes. We also deployed 247 Mac Minis for 11 labs in 10 schools, and that directly supports our digital arts efforts. And that was, as was mentioned earlier tonight, the ERP continues to move forward. This is truly a cross-divisional effort, and it is not without its challenges, just to be perfectly honest. And we are particularly sensitive to all issues surrounding payroll problems. And the team right now is digging in deeply to identify those payroll-related issues and addressing them as we find them. We've also added over 70 job aids to support many of the ERP functions, so we can provide self-help to our employees across the district. And the same thing for, we are, in the fall, we are going to start up the virtual drop-in sessions, so people can come in and get instruction and information around all things surrounding the ERP. And again, as part of the challenges that I mentioned before, we are addressing the issues as we see them directly with the M4 executive leadership, so we do ensure that we get the right level of support to address and smooth out our implementation of our enterprise resource planning system. And network improvements. So again, this is part of the summer work that we just can't do during the school year. We are, later this fall, we will be replacing 7.2 miles of fiber connecting the Nederland's school area. Now, while this fiber will remain above ground, it will be made of armored strengthened fiber cabling that is designed to endure above-ground installation and put up with our weather conditions as they roll in. In addition, we also will be replacing all the uninterruptible power supplies and supporting the networking equipment in all of our schools. And the Connect Me project is well underway to be completed by the end of this calendar year. Right now, we have 28 schools have been completed. Six more will be completed by the end of this month. And with the exception of Nederland, 44 schools will be finished by the end of this calendar year. And so far, we have over 250 students who have been connected via the LiveWire project. And we continue to try to push for, to get additional students signed up for those services. Thank you.
Good evening. I will just touch very briefly on the enrollment and Free and Reduced Lunch Help Center. We have been doing this for... We have been doing this for a number of years. This year, we started last year with running it over the weekend to give additional support, folks, another day for folks to be able to get in here if a weekday is not quite as accessible. So, Wednesday through Saturday, and then Monday and Tuesday. The Saturday is, again, not as, actually, not as popular, there weren't as many folks coming in, but again, it's just an opportunity for those folks that might not be able to make it during the week. We had, oh, I updated the slide and it didn't come out. So, there wasn't a transportation scheduler, but bilingual support, facility monitors, student enrollment office staff, and school nutrition staff to support the Free and Reduced Lunch application process. About four-hundred-and-seventy-two families were served this year. We have seen a declining number of families participating in this over the years, and, but still, almost five-hundred is a great support for those folks that need it.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I can't speak, I'm the communications guy, that's not a good thing. Obviously, as we begin the school year, there's a lot of communication to be had, a lot of information that we need to share with our leaders, make sure that folks are trained up on things like the website, tools, school messenger, and all that kind of thing, so really getting our school teams going up again, that kind of thing, carrying all the important information that parents need to know as the school year begins. I will mention that one of the things that we're most proud of as we're starting the school year is that we have launched a new Facebook page that is completely in Espanol, and we're making a new commitment as well to ensure that our Twitter account is carrying more information. We were really looking at the numbers of the folks that were in our social media accounts and realizing that we had the most, you know, need in our Facebook account to have something that really meets our parents where they're at. And so, we're excited about that as part of our effort, our team's effort to really meet the needs of our Spanish speakers better. A lot more communication to come as we're coming, but I'll hand it off back to Dr. DeLaCruz.
So, as you can see, opening our schools, our fifty-six schools, and welcoming back all of our students across all campuses entails pretty detailed collaboration and preparation, not only at schools, but also all of our teams here at the district. And we're really excited about what's been a positive start. We've gotten some great feedback from our educators and our families and students, and we're feeling like we are poised to be very optimistic about a great year to come.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Lisa, Ned, Stacy?
A comment and a question. I almost had to call the help desk this year because I got multiple emails, some from the district, some from my school, that there was information on Infinite Campus that wasn't actually available for twenty-four to forty-eight hours until after I got the email, which I just want to share, was a frustrating experience largely because that meant I logged on and I thought that I just wasn't finding it, right? So, I spent like thirty, forty-five minutes trying to find information that wasn't actually there. So, maybe some better coordination could cut down on the number of people who are reaching out to a help desk to look for a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. Question, I'm not sure, Rob, this might be for you, but when we're looking at this ERP and payroll, I think we discussed this once, but could you tell me what happens when an employee has an error in their paycheck and how we handle that?
I can. So, they fill out a ticket or they contact our payroll office. We established a new protocol when we started to realize that we had folks that weren't getting paid. And so, that protocol is that they fill out a ticket, we understand how much they need to get paid, we pay them within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, depending upon when that comes in, and then we go back and try to fix the ticket and resolve the issue, right? So, we pay them first, so they're whole, right? We want to make sure we do that, take care of our people. And then, we go back and try to figure out, what was it that happened? And there's a myriad of issues that could have happened, probably too many to describe. I know our team is working on some of the issues. I would say that when we talk about the ERP, some of the issues are with the system, and then some of the issues are with moving beyond past practices as a system, and those are deeper things that we'll have to talk about and to continue to change. The system, ERP, is working as it's intended to work, but some of the practices that we've had maybe aren't up to industry standards around clocking in things like that. And so, we're working through those, but we're paying people first, then going through and solving those issues.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, that's the first, that first part was what I was trying to understand. So, somebody submits a ticket, and that's something they can do easily and quickly from their computer or their phone, and then within forty-eight hours, and usually twenty-four, they have a direct deposit or a paycheck available?
That's right. And we're just, you know, we've really, I just want to commend our team, our business service team, our IT team, for really kind of coming together really quickly to make this a priority and make this happen. As you can recall, and we've been trying to keep everyone in the loop on this, there were numerous tickets that were out, and we've ironed out most of those up to this point. I think maybe we have twenty-five, thirty, forty tickets that we're still working through, and then they're trickling in. But we have our fingers crossed for our next payroll run that will have significantly less issues, but if we do, we're going to prioritize making sure we find out what people are owed, and we pay them immediately, so.
I'm so glad to hear that, thank you. And then, the only other thing, Randy, thank you so much for this push on the Spanish pages. I have heard from folks how much they appreciate it, I see it in my various feeds all the time, and I think it's fantastic.
Thank you. And I did want to mention, Dr. Sweeney Moran, that we did, there was a mistake, and I want to apologize to you and the other parents that got the information that said that they had not filled out their ADU yet, which then, I think, sent them on a trek for about a day as we were trying to get the thing straightened out. It was actually miscommunication regards to a list, and we feel very badly that people were struggling to try to figure out if they had done that, so thank you.
I'm not a doctor, but thank you. And no, I actually, we got the email for that pretty quickly. It was mostly around passwords and class lists and teachers and all that information that parents look forward to accessing because our kids are demanding it, that all of those things, we got emails that things were ready prior to them actually being accessible.
Thank you for the presentation. My question is about our students who are still displaced because of the Marshall Fire, and I don't remember McKinny-Vento, it goes to the end of this calendar year, or is it out now? Okay. Do we have some supports available still for those families who are still displaced, which we know are many, 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 that are still not in Louisville and Superior again, yet, still? So, I'm wondering what that looks like this year, we haven't really talked about that at all.
So, all of those families qualified for McKinny-Vento up until the end of the school year. I think that when we, when our schools or when our staff are brought into visual situations, we're working those on a case-by-case basis. The big thing that we were doing that we're not doing now is transportation. So, families that were displaced and we were transporting through the end of the school year, we're not providing transportation for those impacted families at this point. But, again, you know, I think that our team, and we've all said this from the beginning, we're going to be there for those families as this endures, as this goes on, and so, if things come up and our team learns about it, our principals learn about it, we connect with our resources, connect with our partners, and get folks what they need.
Any other questions, Richard?
Thanks for the presentation, it was well-done. I just have a suggestion for maybe next year's presentation when you do the back-to-school thing, particularly to honor some of the classified staff that we have. They were missing in that particular presentation, at least I didn't see them. So, I'd like to see maybe kids get off the school bus or something like that, so, just a suggestion.
Anything else, Richard? Anybody else, questions or comments?
I just wanted to add to what Dr. Anderson shared, for our families who have been impacted by the Marshall Fire, principals are reaching out to families to offer waived fees for activities and athletics. That's another support that we're offering to families.
So, thank you, yeah, it surely is a team effort to open up our schools, and so, I appreciate all of the effort over the summer and over the last week, and I look forward to an awesome year together, so thank you, everyone. Board members, is it all right if we take like a five-minute break? I'm seeing no opposition to that, so let's try to make it five, though. All right, we're back in session. The next item on the agenda is the action items consent grouping. Seven-point-one personnel items, seven-point-two approval of minutes, August nine, 2022. Seven-point-three Colorado preschool program, year-two contract renewals. Seven-point-four correction to resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four language. Seven-point-five formal release of litigation claims regarding opioids. Seven-point-six, the Gartner Amendment. Seven-point-seven intergovernmental annexation agreement between the city of Boulder and Boulder Valley School District for sixty-five-hundred Arapahoe-Boulder, Colorado. Seven-point-eight long-range advisory committee membership. Seven-point-nine, resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five in support of granting additional right-of-way for campus drive improvements. And seven-point-ten Tyler technology software agreement. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Oh, I skipped the legislative update. Is there a legislative update, anyone? We'll add that to the next agenda, how's that? Fortunately, they're not meeting for a while. How about doing my job, thank you, Mr. Vice President?
Can I make a motion?
Yes. Sorry, I jumped ahead on the agenda, but we're fine.
That's fine. Can I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, is there a second? Stacy seconds. Are there any questions or comments about anything on the consent agenda? All right, Kitty?
I'm trying to remember what it was. Yeah, I think it was about campus drive. Do we have any idea when that might get built?
I see Rob Price approaching the podium.
We have, to answer your question, when it will get built, we have a tentative timeframe, but it has to go through city approval first, and that is dependent on, so they'll be filing that, I think, in the next month or two, depending on how fast the city approves that. Campus drive extension is in the first phase of that development. Still a lot of politics around all of that, so I'm not going to guess on the date when that will start, et cetera, there's a lot of work to be done, but first, it has to go to the city for approval.
Well, I hope they expedite this because just thinking about what would have happened had the Marshall Fire happened when we had school in session is horrifying, and just for safety, we need to be able to get that completed.
Rob, can you talk about the annexation agreement? Is that going to allow us, if you know, to be able to start maybe with our tiny homes, or is that something, Rob Anderson? It's pretty exciting to see that. I think that was one of the stumbling blocks, and now we actually might be able to start moving forward with that?
Yeah, so, the annexation agreement, Glenn Segura, if you want to jump, I think Glenn might be online. Oh, he's right here. So, I just walked by and I didn't see Glenn. Glenn, our senior planner, has actually been leading our annexation negotiations with the city of Boulder and has done an incredible job. We are allowed, I mean, really, the next process is it goes to planning?
Planning board.
Planning board for approval, and then it'll go to city council, and then drawings right now are ninety percent done for, approximately seventy-five to ninety percent done, then they have to bid the project. So, we are looking at potentially a January or February start for, is that right? Am I, approximately, January, February start date? We've got a community meeting, we'll be publishing that here in the next week or two, in the end of September, where we'll be inviting our neighbors in and the rest of the town just to talk about the good things that will be happening out of the modular factory.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming, so thank you, Glenn, and thank you, because I know some students are counting the days, so they're going to be able to sign up for that, so that's really exciting. Dr. Anderson, I just have one other quick question, how will the community and the board be able to monitor the long-range advisory committee meetings? Will they be put on our website, the dates? How, or maybe, Rob, you know the answer to that?
So, in all of that, yes. So, by policy, this will be open to the public. We will create a website to continue to monitor that information, we'll continue to come back to the board on a quarterly basis and present updates to you. We'll be pushing information out through our normal channels like we would on any other committee, so, but we'll make sure the board is aware, the community is aware when those meetings will be occurring, when they're taking place, and we'll continue to update websites and publish meeting minutes, et cetera.
So, we could expect the first report back sometime in November, maybe?
Yeah, first meeting will be in September, so it does feel like November, December timeframe is that first meeting. I can inform the board of when that is scheduled currently.
Yeah, that's exciting work to get started, so, and thank you to all the people who've stepped up and are volunteering their time and their talents to working on this kind of really tricky issue, so. All right, any other questions, other than the ones I just had? I don't have any more. Kitty?
I just wanted to say, I was really happy to see that Tina Marques is going to be on the long-range planning committee.
I echo that. Can you call the roll, please, Laura? Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, our first action item tonight is the appointment of a voting delegate to Casby's Delegate Assembly. Do we have a motion? Yes.
I move to nominate Kitty Sargent to be our delegate to the Casby General Assembly, right? That's what it's called?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Beth seconds. Kitty, do you agree?
I do.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, Laura, can you call the roll? Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is the Casby Resolution. The Casby Resolutions are due on August thirtieth, but we've talked about, and I apologize, we don't have the formal language, but we've talked about one resolution, kind of in concept, and if the board is willing, I will continue to work with Kathleen. It is around putting some parameters around when charter schools can move into facilities during a declining enrollment situation. Because right now, the language is a little vague, and what we've seen from the state board is that some of the decisions, in my opinion, have been a little concerning in the result that it kind of impedes a district's ability to manage declining enrollment and where schools are going to be open and closed. So, it's not to say that charter shouldn't be going into those buildings, but more, what are the guidelines that we think should be looked at by the state board and by charters and by school boards when they're making that decision? So, if that's all right with the board, we will, with Kathleen's help, we will put that together, and then we'll put it in Kitty's able hands to bring that forward to the Delegate Assembly sometime in the middle to end of October. So, I'm seeing nods. I don't think we need to vote on that, do we, Kathleen? So, any questions about that? Obviously, we'll get that on the, we'll make that public, and we'll get that published as soon as we get that drafted, so, thank you. The next one is the instructional materials purchase approval.
Can you back up a little bit here?
Sure.
So, I can ask a question on the Casby Resolution?
Sure.
I don't really understand that process to get a Casby Resolution on the books, but at the priority sessions that we had, I did mention that it would be a good idea for us to start looking at the accountability laws in Colorado, and if at some point in time, we may talk about that, to see what we can do to maybe put together a resolution to Casby, to see if we can gain some support in terms of looking at all the language in the accountability law, because I do agree that districts that have English-language learners and low-income kids are the ones that are actually suffering from the school performance frameworks.
And I would add schools with those populations, not just districts. So, Richard, I guess I have a question for you. That's a heavy lift, I'm happy to try to work with you to get something as a resolution. The other option is, we haven't talked about our legislative platform yet, but we could certainly take a dive- our legislative platform yet, but we could certainly take a dive into what we would want to propose as kind of changes to legislation. So we can go one, we can go both ways. We can go whichever way you're most comfortable with. So I'd leave it up to you. What's your pleasure?
Let me think about that because I am meeting with the attorney for Adams 14. And I want to see what his interest is in terms of maybe even helping craft some language around that, so.
So the process, Richard, just to answer your question, is by August 30th, we have to submit something to Casby. Then their Legislative Resolutions Committee meets and they decide whether they're going to, everything gets passed along, but some get passed along with the support of the committee, others just get passed along. And then it goes to the delegate assembly and the delegates vote on it, and it's basically the guiding principles for the legislative assembly. We also have standing resolutions, which I'd be happy to share with you because some of this might come under the local control standing resolutions. So certainly happy to work with you on that.
That sounds good.
Does that help with the process?
And I know that August 30th is probably a pretty heavy lift, you know, so maybe just going on the legislative platform, I think, for now.
We can also do floor resolutions. They're a little heavier lift, but there are floor resolutions that you can do at delegate assembly and floor resolutions you could do at the convention because it's a business meeting. I'm looking at Kathleen and I have that right. So there's ways that we can still continue to carry this forward and try to get Casby support. And we can also, if we have legislative proposals, we can also ask the Casby Board to support those resolutions or those efforts as we go forward. So I think we have lots of ways to try to get Casby support on this.
Great.
So thank you. Thanks for reminding us of that. All right, anything else on Casby Resolutions? All right, so now we have the instructional materials purchase approval. Rob, is there anything you want to talk to us about with that? Sorry, I caught you at a bedtime. The instructional materials purchase approval, is there anything? Okay, we have Sam.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. In order to ensure that our educators have the tools necessary to provide instruction that's aligned to the Colorado academic standards and to the BVSD-prioritized standards, we needed to adopt some additional support materials in a few content areas, specifically in science, social studies, world languages, and health. So our academic services team, under the leadership of Director Lynn Gershman, conducted a review of those materials with our instructional staff. Teams selected the support materials that were purchased. Two of the resources did exceed the threshold, the dollar amount threshold for board approval, but these did need to be purchased over the summer in order to be ready for our teachers to start school this August. So we went ahead with those purchases as allowed by board resolution. And we are now sharing the details of those purchases with the board and we're happy to answer any questions about the selection process or about those materials. I have Director Lynn Gershman here with me if you have any questions.
Board members, are there any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little bit about the selection process, just how we go about doing that as it is now.
Of course, board member Niznick.
Hi. Thanks for making it worth my while, for staying. Do I push this? Yeah? No? I'm on. Okay. So basically, we sent out a survey to all of our teachers, thinking that our teachers have been using high-quality instructional materials. We just didn't have it available to every single school. So we wanted to know what teachers were using, how they were using them, what successes they had, what failures they had. So we sent that out initially. Then we took those responses and we brought the, we created some committees, volunteer committees, and came together to review those resources that teachers were, knew about or were using already. The first activity we did was to create a rubric of our non-negotiables. Our non-negotiables typically were, they had to be able to be rostered with our technology system, with ClassLink, to protect our student data. They had to, the resources had to be exactly the same in English and Spanish for our dual-language programs. So we see that all the time, that our Spanish language resources are of lesser quality or where the monolingual will be in color, the Spanish language will be in black and white. It's gross. So that was a non-negotiable. It had to be rigorous and it had to be reviewed by an outside source. And it had to be, you know, useful. So, and standards-based. So they made the rubrics, you know, and they added all their content pieces. And then after that, we reviewed all of the selections that the teachers had submitted and narrowed it down. We tried to rank them, one through five, because we weren't sure what the budget was going to look like at that point. And so every area got their first choice, for sure. Some of the areas got second and third choices as well.
Thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Board members, any other questions? Kathleen, I'm looking to you. This is an action item, but I see no action that we need to take because the action's already been taken. Oh, sorry, Nicole has a question. You sure? So is this it?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Ms. Schaefer and I were just discussing that in the future, we would bring this to the board as an information item, since it was purchased pursuant to your resolution. But I know this was a keen area of interest, so what a great opportunity to hear from Ms. Gershman.
Exactly. So thank you for sticking around and for answering our question. I really appreciate it. Are you sure, Nicole? Okay, all right. All right. We are moving on to our last action item, which is Resolution 20-26, authorizing the purchase of the property located at 5075 Chaparral Court. It's an article on the front page of the Daily Camera today talking about this. Rob Price, do you want to talk about it briefly?
Yes, I can. As you just mentioned before you tonight, it's Resolution 22-26, authorizing the purchase of Unit 3 at 5075 Chaparral Court, Boulder. Boulder Prep currently occupies two of the units in a three-unit building. BVSD, we own the first unit. Boulder Prep owns the second unit. This is really us tonight purchasing the third unit. By us doing that, Boulder Prep would turn ownership of Unit 2 over to us. Therefore, we would own all three units and we would lease the building back, similar to other charter schools in the district, back to Boulder Prep. Boulder Prep does currently occupy about 5,900 square feet and this acquisition would give them another 2,400 square feet. That additional space will be used for offices, intervention rooms, small group rooms, and also hands-on learning space. So the asking price is $700,000, aligned with the appraisal. Real estate contract has been negotiated by the district's legal counsel and is attached to the agenda, and therefore, staff recommends the purchase of Unit 3 for $700,000. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Lisa?
When we did something similar with Justice, there was an enormous amount of work to be done to bring everything up to our standards in terms of the building. Is this situation like that or are things here in the sort of shape where folks are moving in and it's just routine maintenance?
No, we are estimating that the renovations will be around $300,000. So that is a request that will come to you at a future meeting.
Any other questions, board members? This is exciting for the program at Boulder Prep. I think it's a great move and I look forward to seeing how they're able to expand their support for their students. So can we have a motion then to approve Resolution 22-26? By Kitty, seconded by Richard. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, board members, we have a study item, but I think we've resolved the issue. November 8th is Election Day, and so there was some question about how much attention we'll all be paying after 8 o'clock at night when there's election results that a lot of us will be paying attention to. So I think what, trying to move it was challenging because many of us have scheduled other things around this calendar that we've already approved. So I think what we're going to try to do is have a shortened meeting and try to be done as close to 7:00 to 7:30 as we can that night. So I think that's the resolution. And when we were working on prioritization, we looked at making sure that that meeting wasn't overloaded with topics. So I think we can take this off of study and just continue with the calendar as we already have it scheduled. Are there, is that consistent with understandings of, okay? So the last is future agenda items. I think, Lisa, we mentioned that we're going to talk about what, if we need an actual policy or what our practice is going to be when there are requests for the board to support ballot measures?
Yeah, I had two things, both of which we discussed, I thought we were going to see on the agenda tonight, and I don't mind that. They're not on the agenda tonight, but I want to find out if they're coming soon. And one was the question around a discussion about how we decide when and how to endorse ballot measures. And the other was, we had discussed what happened with the resolution around LGBTQ curriculum questions at the state level. So I'm wondering if we can anticipate seeing both of those on our next regular meeting.
Yes, we can definitely. I can address the issue of endorsement. I'll make sure that we bring that forward with the recommendation as to how we proceed. The issue on LGBTQ standards, inclusion in the social studies standards, when I reviewed my notes, that was something that we talked about adding to the legislative platform and that we would bring the legislative platform up in August so that we would be able to share the board's position on that with the state board, for example. So we'll prepare that as an agenda item for the next meeting and we can address both the issue that board member Garcia raised tonight about accountability and the LGBTQ standards there.
I appreciate that and I think putting it in the legislative agenda is important. I've also been approached, and I think several of us have, by several folks in our local LGBTQ community, asking specifically for that resolution to occur. So I wonder if we couldn't consider doing both.
Richard?
No, no, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments around agenda setting? All right, so I think we have a couple weeks off. I think our next meeting isn't until after Labor Day, if I'm correct on our agenda. Is that correct? I think it's September, I don't remember the date. 6th. Thank you, Stacy. So I wish everybody a good couple weeks and we'll see you after Labor Day. Meeting adjourned.
Stacy, what's on the 6th? What? 13th. Oh, 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 okay. The meeting is on the 13th.
I stand corrected. It's not the 6th, it's the week after, if anyone's listening.
I would miss two of them.